Thirty, I'd like to call the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, March twenty-second. And we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first of all, I'd just like to thank everybody for being here. We kind of, this time of year, we have a whole lot of meetings. And some of them in the past have run very late. And so when this room opened up, we thought it would be a good opportunity to go over a few of the different areas of the budget. And that will hopefully free us up in later meetings for more discussions on the final budget. So next on the agenda, we have delegations, which is the opportunity for the public to speak to any item on the agenda tonight. I don't see anyone in the room. I don't see anyone on the Zoom, so I think we're good there. And then we can move on to new business, which is our review of the budget. Our finance director, Kevin Gervais, is on the Zoom. And he's going to walk us through first the revenue side of the balance sheet here. So if, do you have your microphone on, Kevin?
It's muted.
It's muted.
All right, can you guys hear me over there?
Yes.
Now you're muted.
All right, very good. All right, let me just share my screen as well. One second. All right, let me pull my screen. I just want to make sure I'm on the right one, hold on a second. Okay. Can everyone see? I'm not sure if you guys, does it say page one across the top here?
Well, not really, but is it the same? Is it the same document that we have in our revenue book?
Correct, correct, and I can walk through.
Okay, so then we can look at our own.
Correct. Let me just pull up real quick, I just want to make sure you can see everybody. All right. So starting off the top, we have the current revenue, current year tax revenue. Second one, we can see this motor vehicle supplemental that is added. Every year, so you have until October first, you know, to get on the grand list. If you buy a car after October first to September thirtieth, you don't get a free ride for that year, you get a supplemental bill. Historically, to the best of my knowledge, we've never budgeted for this, and it hasn't been included in our calculations. So every year, we see that revenue is going over. And that's not because we are shaking everyone down and collecting more money, that's because we had this unbudgeted, we had this unbudgeted number baked into the current tax year revenue. So we broke that out this year. So next year, the current year tax revenue number is not going to be, you know, over by a million dollars like it is this year. It might be over by a little bit more depending on what we set as a tax collection rate and what we collect, but we can, we'll discuss that.
Do you have historical numbers of what the supplemental was?
So on the front page here, where is it? We've used, last three years, it looks like we've used ninety-eight point two percent collection rate. Just to give you some flavor of how we're collecting this year.
Yeah, actually, I meant in regard to the motor vehicle supplemental.
Oh, oh, um, I, you know what? I had that in my office, hold on, I don't know if I had exactly what I need. But it's over, it's over four hundred fifty thousand in 2019, and then it's over five and six hundred thousand in the last couple of years. And it was a printout, and it is sitting on my desk in my office.
Okay, so then the five hundred thousand projected seems reasonable.
Correct, I met with, uh, the, one of the tax collectors over there, the tax collector's office, and we went through the assessed amount and then figured how much we could collect. So she was comfortable, five hundred thousand was obtainable. I might have a work paper, but I will check, I will check in a few minutes here. Next up, prior year, this is, it's, it's up from the current year's budget of four seventy-five. But this number will not be as high as prior years because in 2021, 22, we collected one point three million dollars. That's when we had the big tax sale. So a lot of the people that owed back taxes, they had a little, you know, they had to pay or we sold the property. So we collected a lot, but the problem is, you know, there's not as much interest to collect in future years on prior year because there's no prior year to collect. So you'll notice, you know, prior year, seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars in prior year interest and fees. This year, you know, we're projecting two hundred and three thousand, a little higher than what's currently budgeted, just because some people don't pay and we hope to, you know, grab some more cash. Telephone tax payment, I believe that is for the cell towers. It might be like the, instead of them paying actually taxes, they may pay like a flat fee or something like that. That's how I interpret it. And if, Kevin, if you think it's different, just chime in and let me know.
No, that's correct. I mean, I think we may get a little bit more next year because some people looking to add to some towers, but we don't know that yet. I'd be wrong to budget what we, I'm sure of, we're relatively positive of.
So, you know, historically, you add these, it's about forty-two, forty-five thou- between forty, between thirty-seven, forty-five thousand. Maybe there was a payment that was missed here or something, but I think maintaining a forty-two thousand dollar zero percent is appropriate for now. I think the Board of Selectmen has been working with David Garzett, the new building official, on updating building permit fees. Bring us more in line with regional communities. So he was comfortable with budgeting for five hundred thousand dollars. And then if there's any questions, I can also send you, there's a ten-year work paper for all of these. And if you think these numbers are small now, you know, add ten columns across and you're looking at tiny little ants on a paper. But I can send you that electronically if you want to see the historical numbers for all these accounts.
What he'll be, Dave tomorrow, when he presents that, will present what his plan is for increasing the, right now, we're rock bottom in the whole region in building fees. This will bring us to a little below the middle of the pack. We won't be anywhere near the top. But this requires an ordinance, town attorney is working on that, and the plan is to have that in effect by the time the budget goes into effect. So he, and that's a very conservative estimate, what he has there for an increase too. He thinks it'll be more than that, but we want to stay very conservative.
And then ZBAY and planning, miniscule zoning fees. We budgeted twenty-five thousand last year, and that's cyclical depending on, you know, these big projects and things like that. So he thought, you know, twenty-five thousand was appropriate again. Shellfish permits, five hundred dollars. Mooring fees, we are taking that out of the general fund, and there is going to be a special revenue fund for mooring fees. And that's the state statute, correct, Kevin?
Right, whatever money is raised through mooring fees is supposed to go back to the Harbor Management Commission. So that's why we've removed, just their budget has been reduced to pretty much nothing now, except for the first year, we want to put a little bit of money in there for the recording secretary and the harbor master. But their revenue is going to jump almost quadruple because of the fact that mooring fees, which were twenty-five dollars when they went into effect, have never gone up. So they're raising it to seventy-five dollars this year, which is still extremely low.
And where is that going to?
That's going to be put into a special revenue account, so they'll basically be self-funding their, all their activities, their boat upkeep, mooring, everything will be done right from that. So as of right now, it'll be a very small budget, and we hope to reduce that. But they'll have that revenue account.
I believe for the time being, we have twelve hundred dollars budgeted, Kevin, is that sound about right?
Right, eight hundred dollars for the recording secretary and four hundred for the harbor master.
Correct, just as a placeholder for the first couple of months, just in case, you know, the revenue doesn't hit before the payroll hits. Okay, solid waste, five hundred bucks, park vendor permits, a thousand dollars. Now we get into some of the interesting, the bigger numbers here. Education cost sharing, currently, and Kevin can speak to this, they're proposing a two hundred eighty-five thousand dollar cut. Kevin, you want to take it from there?
Right, obviously, this, I contacted Senator Marks and Representative Cheeseman on this. One of the first bills introduced this year was a House bill. I can't remember the exact, fifty-nine oh-one, or I'm not sure of the number, but it was introduced by the Speaker of the House. So I'm fairly comfortable that that is going to be restored. But here again, right now, we are down at two hundred eighty-four thousand, or closer to two hundred eighty-five thousand in ECS funding over previous year. But I think a fairly comfortable degree of certainty, we'll get that back.
And I believe we find out late April, early May. So we'll keep that close to the vest and monitor that. Next is tuition from other districts. You'll notice that's down almost ten percent. And how that number is calculated is, it's done in arrears. So it's always one year behind the number of students. So last year, there was a ten percent decrease, so that's reflected in, or this current year, ten percent decrease, and that's reflected in the bill for next year.
And is the tuition based on our cost per pupil?
Salem gets a little different cost, but it's based on, they get a certain cost per student based on, for regular ed and a different cost for special ed as well. And it's, you know, it's a guess that we, they have, there's, twice a year, there's a joint, Eastline Board of Ed, Salem Board of Ed meeting, where they basically adopt the tuition and the rate and then the number of students estimated for the following year. And then you reconcile after the following year and said, okay, we budgeted three hundred and gave you money for three hundred, we had two hundred and eighty-five. So we owe them some money. So when we estimate the next years, we give them credit for what we estimated minus what we overestimated. There have been positive years when they've had to come back and give us more too, but this is not one of those years.
Thank you.
And next up is the state grants. You'll notice we lost municipal stabilization grant, the entire state did. They did away with that, and they're instead of switching that same dollar amount, it's now called the Supplemental Revenue Sharing Grant, the very bottom there. And then the other big ticket item here that is hitting us hard is pilot. Right now, it's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of our pilot money they are, they're trying to claw back from us. So we're going to monitor that as well. And that's all, that's for the National Guard, prison, Rocky Neck. Anything else, Kevin?
I think that, yeah, National Guard, which is two locations in town, and any state property that we have, you know, there's a, there's actually a little, no, that's a Waterford, yeah, little DOT garage, but.
So does the, the work that they're doing to the exit off the highway where they've taken over part of our land, does that affect us at all?
Yes, we've lost the tax revenue for that as well. And the tax revenues for that, yeah, there was like that one-time payment to us for that, but we'll lose some resources there as well.
So we don't get anything back from the state ongoing because they took over?
A nicer interchange is about all we're getting out of that one all of a sudden done, so much nicer one.
How are they calling back? Have they lowered the rate, they changed the formula?
For what?
For the pilot?
Yeah, they've changed the rate for that too, and they've cut back on it. They've slowly been eking away at that. Because right now, to fund it fully would require an additional four hundred million dollars on the state. And I was at a CAG meeting where State Senator Kathy Austin did a great job talking about it, that that was one of the things we said, pilot money is something we all, you know, could really, we need, especially a town like us. And she said, right now, they're basically half-funding it. So they'd have to double it to fully fund it, and she just does not see that happening. There might be some money going back into that, but not to where we would be fully funded at that.
Okay, so they just decided to cut it?
Yeah, it's not being funded at its full rate, so.
So I think I skipped up, I was just trying to fix the formatting here. Next up, we have charges for services, dog licenses, miniscule, town clerk, up a little bit. And we, we'll talk later about the projection for '23 and how that is trending upwards a little bit. Convenience tax also is over-expended in the current year, so we budgeted a little higher amount there. Police, extra duty, that's up ten percent. Fire marshal, this is something else we're going to talk about, kind of hand in hand with updating the building department's, you know, codes and fees. You know, Kevin and I have had discussions with the fire marshal, Mr. Bundy, about implementing fees for the fire marshal. Two of those fees are annual inspections for properties of three families or more, and then commercial, and then planning, just like building and zoning and everyone else that gets planning fees. You know, the fire marshal also can get planning fees because in these new builds, the fire marshal goes multiple times into these buildings, has to review the plans, and right now, we are not charging for that. So he estimates we can get seventy-five grand for that, up between the two of them. Anything I missed, Kev?
No, for that too, we're the only town in the region that does not charge for those services. And here again, too, some of the revenue he's using for that, he's always proposing when he comes to talk to you, is to have a full-time deputy because one of the things we have not been able to do with a full-time fire, one full-time and a very intermittent part-time, I mean, not many hours at all, is we aren't able to come up with the inspections of the three families and stuff like that, which is a statutory requirement. So not only would we get a little bit of extra revenue, we'd be much easier made keeping up with the mandates of state law, state statutes. So he'll point that out when he comes to talk to you. And again, that is also, the ordinance is being crafted by town attorney for that as well.
Hey, just back to the, I know this is a small number, but to the dog license fees, it looks like we're estimating, you know, almost half of what we took in in prior years. And it sounds, sounds like, from what Karen Galbo had mentioned, was that it was going to be other providers of pet services, dog services. They are going to have to ascertain that a dog has its license before they could provide those services?
Yes.
So I would think we would be collecting even more than what we're.
I can get it, because we get so little out of them.
I know, I know, it's a small number.
For an eight-dollar, we get, it's one dollar.
Yeah.
I can find out from Karen, because she explained to me why, and if I tell you right now, I'll have it not correct, and I'm not going to do that. I'll get it to you, I'll get it corrected to you, but I know that.
I know, it's a small number, but it just, you know.
And to be honest with you, I'm not sure that five thousand dollars, you know, when I looked at the last couple of years, unless we have like, you know, twenty thousand dogs in town, I'm not sure how we're collecting that much money because you only get on the town side. It's an eight-dollar fee, I believe, per dog if it's less bait and neutered. I believe the town gets two or three dollars of that.
No, we don't get quite that much. I mean, it's very, it's very, very, you know, miniscule.
Yeah, more a dollar or two, so I'll have to look in there.
Maybe they could license the coyotes.
Please.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So we did the fire marshal, assessor maps. Again, this is just if people come in and want a copy of their records and so, or the state of Connecticut also, we charge for them, you know, a couple bucks. Cans, these are those lovely garbage cans you guys have. If you break them and it's out of warranty, or you lose it, or something happens to it, you know, they're not free. So we collect revenue on the same token. Remember this number because it's included in our capital. We're asking, I think, for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars to buy, you know, a tractor trailer load worth of garbage cans. And that's how Joe Burka has done it historically. You know, we collect money, it goes in the general fund, and then, you know, when we need more cans, you know, he asks for cans every, you know, four or five years. So we make up the difference. He charges over a hundred percent, I believe, for the cans, or maybe close to a hundred percent, something like that, of the cost. Tipping fees, that is up a little bit. And to be honest with you, I can't remember off the top of my head why Joe told me that was up. Maybe just the cost of garbage is up. Recycling is down, and I know why that is. It's because the cost of metals is down, so.
Well, no, that recycling is basically, you know, a lot of those are bought and shipped to China. China is no longer that market, so it's a bit harder to dispose of the recycles that, not so much the Fisont cans, we're not talking about that, but we're talking about the plastics that are normally recycled.
Commission on Aging, thousand bucks. Land, excuse me, landfill deposits, we're maintaining same as the current year. Rent at Cheney Park, we're taking a thousand dollars away. So overall, that Charges for Services Department is up seventeen percent, one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So good stuff coming out of that department, those accounts. We have two accounts in Finance and Assessments, and to be honest, this wetlands permits and licenses is misclassified originally. It said, it said something wetlands, and I interpreted that as like wetlands fines, you know, someone violating a wetlands ordinance or something like that. That's not true. It's more like wetlands permits and applications. So, but I already had the budget, you know, halfway through the budget process before I could move stuff around. So just in the future, you'll see that moved upwards. So both of those numbers are up. Police parking, he's projecting a thousand dollar increase. And then wetlands fines, we're projecting a fifty percent increase. But, you know, six thousand, nine thousand, we're not moving the needle on that much there. One of the topics that I kind of oversee in the finance office a little bit is interest income on our, you know, on our cash. And originally, I budgeted five hundred thousand, I moved that up to one twenty-five. You know, I kind of was playing with my model a little bit. And with the most recent news, you know, I have to re-look at that model and look at what the, you know, the experts are forecasting with everything happening. So we might, we might have to revisit that number a little bit, but, so that's just something to keep in mind. You know, that, I kind of made the model a little more aggressive based on the climate we were in. So I'm going to re-look at that model a little more just to make sure we can collect six twenty-five on revenue. But just to give you some, you know, how well my projection did, I think four or five months ago, I did an interest income projection, and I mean, month to month, I've only been off, you know, a thousand dollars this way, twelve hundred this way, so it's really been pretty accurate. So we'll see how good I do over a course of a year. And track the, track the interest rates going on. Return check fees, if you, if you bounce a check, we're charging twenty bucks. Attorney fees, these are like kind of pass-through fees. Miscellaneous, twenty-five hundred dollars, nothing to write home about. I'd like to point out, the First Selectman's miscellaneous off, miscellaneous revenue, we budgeted twenty-five dollars, and he's up eight times that for two hundred dollars. So maybe we, maybe we put in a two hundred dollar adjustment here and try to get some cash out of him.
I didn't spend a dime of that, Sandy.
So, and then, just finance, finance, this is inclusive of, oh crap. I can't think of it off the top of my head, just like it's a catch-all. There's any money that comes in, we're not sure where it goes, it's miscellaneous. So if there's, say there was a credit on a statement or something from a, you know, WB Mason Auto Zone or something from a prior year, that doesn't go into an expense account, that goes into a revenue account. So that's kind of like a catch-all. And I'm not saying there's eighty thousand dollars in mistakes, it's just randomly, we get, you know, money we're not expecting. Doggy, insurance reimbursements, I'm thinking that's the, we're budgeting for the KERMA equity check. The KERMA, every year, we anticipate a checkback from KERMA, like a members' distribution. And you can see the last couple of years, it's been rather lucrative, except for this one year when they were dealing with COVID and they withheld a lot of the funds back. So we're expecting twenty-seven five, and I think that'll be more than doable. This revenue, this dog revenue for ACO. Waterford pays for half of the animal patrol officers with, with, with exception to overtime, which gets split depending on where they go. So there's that, so that's half of the ACO budget down here. To some, to the last but not least, other financing sources. We have three big funding, three sources here. Use of bond premium, and that's in the Capital Projects Fund, but I just wanted to label it, use of bond premium. Ambulance subsidy, I'm keeping it same as last year. That is for two firefighters and IT services. They pay, I believe, right around forty thousand dollars for IT services, and then two firefighters. Anything else, Kevin, they pay for?
They also pay for all the fire department, they pay for, but this might not be in this for revenue as far as us, they do pay for the fuel for the, all the fire trucks, not just the ambulances. And they do provide quite a bit of equipment and supplies for each fire department as well.
Yep. And then, last but not least, two million dollar use of fund balance. And how I, and how I kind of got there was this current year's one point three million dollars we're not using, and we are over in revenues. So let me just pull up another work paper real quick. Does anyone have any questions before I dive into how I got to that use of bond premium?
I think that's what they're most interested in.
Yeah.
That's what they're interested in, Kevin.
The use of the fund balance, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to dig right in there. Where is my work paper? Okay. It is. Stand by. The pressure's killing me. Where am I going here? Give me one second, pull up this work paper.
Your review's coming up next month, too.
All right, enough pressure. All right, I'm trying to find the fund balance report. What is happening here? All right, I got it. So this is our updated fund balance projection. Oh, hold on a second here, let's point the numbers. There it is, hold on a second. There it is, okay, that's the number. These auto save work papers are killing me. I try to do like, you know, a little, you know, play around with the numbers, and it saves it on me and the numbers change. So this is the number, fourteen point nine six, so.
We still have the old document up here.
Let me zoom in here, can everyone see this now?
You gotta switch to your different screen, I think.
Oh, oh, oh. Have a seat now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so what we have here?
Can you make it a little bit, can you zoom in a little bit more? Make it a little bigger?
I can, I can, let me see here. All right, we good?
Pretty good, but maybe if you can make it a little bit bigger, that would be better.
Oh my goodness.
To dealing with an aging crowd down here.
It's okay, it's okay, we'll get there. All right, hold on here.
I just got these.
Is that a little better?
That, that looks pretty good, yeah.
Okay, maybe if I, can I bold it, would that help you?
No, I think it's good now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
All right, so fund balance, we're starting 2021, eleven point four million essentially. Just on my numbers, it looks like we have a net income of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars for fiscal year '22. So that goes from eleven point four to eleven point six. Current year, 2023 projections, I'm projecting eighty million, nine fifty-six, four seventy-one for revenues, and I'm projecting eighty million, five hundred thousand roughly for expenses. That is about a four hundred fifty thousand dollar, you know, increase in our fund balance. That is. That is brings us just under the 15%. Okay? So, some things I'd just like to point out with this number. Let me find my revenues. And I know, I know, hold on, I'll shrink the font down. Just hide it and just make it bold for you guys. So, we have a few things that I have not, you know, moved. Um, in the, in the current budget year, we have 387,000 dollars of capital projects funds that's supposed to be transferred into the general fund. I have not done that and it is not included in the projection. And the reason why is I'm not sure, I wanna, I wanna be 100% sure the capital projects fund has a positive fund balance itself, right? We always talk about the general fund, fund balance. Every, every one of these funds has its own fund balance, right? If you look at the financial statements, um, you know, not to alarm anybody, but uh, pull up the, the financial statements on the website and you'll notice, um, our capital projects fund is negative, the fund balance. So why would I yank 40,000 dollars out of fund balance, uh, right now? So I want to verify that the projects that have yet to be expended, the available budgets on them, right? That dollar amount of all the capital projects available to spend is less than the available fund balance, or at least equal to it, right? So if the available projects is a million dollars, right, we have a million dollars of projects that have yet to be spent, but fund balance is 800,000, the capital projects fund's negative 200,000 dollars, right? The fund balance is negative 200,000. That's, that's not good. So I just have to do some reconciling, um, and just verify that there's enough money there before I do this transfer. So, um, another one, uh, to talk about is the, the Parker Rec special revenue fund of 10,000 dollars. Um, you know, um, you'll hear from, from Jerry in the coming days, um, the special revenue fund at Parker Rec isn't in the best financial shape. They took a real big hit, they took 185,000 dollar hit in 2020. So they had a, they had a, um, their, um, their fund balance was over 200,000 dollars and every year the town was budgeting to take 10,000, 10,000 of that money. Well, this year, the, the special revenue funds, fund balance is like 38,000. So if we take 10,000 out, it's down to, you know, 28. Um, and that is not much room for, you know, um, wiggle room for them in case anything happens or they need to, you know, do anything at any of these, you know, beaches or anything, any special projects. So, um, I have not transferred that money either. So, um, I guess what I'm getting at is, uh, you know, right now, I'm projecting us over revenues by 291,000 dollars. And that's pretty impressive, seeing that I did not transfer in 1.7 million. So, um, did that, did that make sense to everybody? Does anyone have any questions?
Wait, what was the 1.7 million? So that was the 1.3 plus the 400?
So the 1.7 million is this fund, this use of fund balance right here, this 1.3 million and this 387,000 is 1.687 million. I just rounded it to 1.7. So.
So basically the money we budgeted to use, we haven't had, we've been, you know, we had some very good factors for, we don't talk about storms and that because last time Kevin did it, we had storm. So, uh, but, you know, we've had some areas and, and, you know, we knew that there, you know, our, our thought was that we know the board read was a little looking at a possible pro, special appropriations, so we kind of curtailed here so that we could assist in that area if, if needed at some point in time. Because like I've said, we're, you know, it's two separate budgets, but it all comes out of the same pot, so if we can help someone else, we will. So, you know, we were sort of like a mini freeze on for the last several months here.
And then on expenses, we're about half a million dollars under budget. So between the two of them, you know, um, we're, you know, we're in good shape. Um, and depending how things hash out the remain, remaining parts of the, you know, the last, next three months, um, I'm thinking unless something, you know, something goes terribly awry, um, this number's gonna grow, not shrink. Right? So, um, this number I, I see going up. Um, so that's just, uh.
Well, that would be good because we, we do have this focus on trying to maintain that fund balance and not go back to a smaller percentage so that we can continue to show the rating agencies our dedication to keeping that fund balance up there and, and not dipping in.
Yep. So my only comment, I, I guess to the, to the $2 million use of fund balance was, um, I know, you know, this crit where it's right here, this bottom line, um, you know, we didn't use this 1.3 million. Um, so okay, 1.3 million dollars, we didn't use the prior year, but, and we've collected, you know, over a million dollars in unexpected revenues. So I know next year, we're not gonna have that same, you know, same windfall, so to speak. Um, but, um, but just the, the impact, um, I just wanted to smooth things out so that the ta, it wasn't, um, the burden wasn't all on the tax, the taxes. So you can see right here, the other financing sources is up 40%. Um, so, and that's, and that's a big reason why the current year tax rate, uh, 7.37% is less than the expenses of 8.7, right? It's because all of these other revenues grew by more than, um, you know, the taxes. So, does that make sense?
Anybody have questions? So we've got really a, a month before the Board of Finance, um, will recommend this, so we'll have some time to fine tune these numbers.
And one of the things too is, I, I don't know if you know, the last thing too, we identified remaining funds in, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act that we maybe not used, that we could help use that to defray some possible project, one-time projects, uh, purchases for next year too that would, you know, we could remove that possibly going forward to. But I'm gonna do, I told the board, if I could develop a, a recommendation and make sure there are, of course, there was a time when very few things qualified for our, then it's time, it was, it was always the last new regulations, which opened up a lot. So Parks and Records asked for a few things, so if we could help, you know, offset those costs, like lawn mowers, those are things that are gonna last for 10 to 15 years, makes, makes sense to do that because it's not expensive, it would come back the following year.
You wouldn't think that would be, a lawnmower would be.
Well, here again, it, it's, it has to do with recreation. You're, you're keeping the outdoor area open to recreation. Same thing with that line painter that they, they're asking, which was gonna save a ton of man hours, but okay, now you've got less per, you know, that, again, prepare on outdoor recreational areas and stuff like that. So that, I think would, even in the original ones, would have fit under that as well.
So Kev, just to piggyback on what you're saying, between the, um, we have 51,000, almost 52,000 dollars left to allocate with an ARPA and then there is this contingency and then a contingency here to bring the available funds to ARPA to about 100, well, just over 100,000 dollars.
We did say, if you remember, we set up a, an emergency contingency if needed. The failure is now if another thing develops to the magnitude of when this was done, there'll be another type of, but we are gonna keep, you know, a, a portion set aside for emergencies. We have way overestimated attorney costs, which is hard to believe. Yes, I know. Sorry. But that we there, but you know, we will keep, you know, a sizable sometimes, so if, if something did pop up, we'd have the ability to buy test kits or masks or something like that. We do wanna keep a little bit for that, but that's it.
I don't know if you guys can see my screen, it keeps saying it stops sharing.
There it is, yeah.
105,000. So.
Well, definitely some good news on the revenue side.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Yep. So we found, we identified some, uh, you know, the motor vehicle supplemental, the use of bond premiums and, um, you know, the, the interest income, um, have really, have really, um, you know, helped on the revenue side. Um, and then, and then also with regards to the bond premium, we're not spending all of our bond premium. There's still, I believe, 365 left, something like that?
I thought it was 390, but.
Okay, yeah, 390.
And that does not include the money we've already semi-obligated to seal the, uh, police building.
Yeah. So.
And with the interest income, I, I definitely wanna keep talking to you about that, just in, in light of the, uh, banking crisis that's going on these days, making sure we're, um, you know, not taking any undue risk anywhere.
I, um, did anyone see what the Fed did today? I didn't pay attention.
Up a quarter.
Okay.
But yields came down, so.
Well, that's, yeah, of course, that happens, yeah.
Um, yeah, I saw he said today that Silicon Valley Bank was a fluke. So we'll see.
Yeah.
Um, anything else with revenues we'd like to discuss?
I'm good, are you guys all? Any, any other? Yeah.
And like I said, if you guys have any questions and you want me to, um, dig in any number or you want more information on a number, um, just let me know and I'll put a work paper together, if I don't have one already on that number.
Okay, and if anyone asks, if you could reply to everybody with.
Okay.
So that way.
Yep, will do.
We're all on the same page. Okay, so I think that wraps up revenue. Next would be, um, the finance department budget.
All right, the finance department.
And what number are you again?
118.
118.
I prefer number one, but we'll take 118. So, um, is my screen, 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 can you guys see, uh, the finance office here?
Yeah.
So, um, there's some changes at the finance office, I'm hoping that will, uh, that'll pass the last, the last hurdle, or I guess two more hurdles. But, um, so, um, one of the big drivers of the budget, I see I'm up 25% and I know that as a finance director, your department shouldn't be up 25%, but, um, I'm really looking forward to a, right now it's labeled a staff accountant because that is the current title, that's the current person I have in that position. Um, that, that person works eight hours a week, roughly 30 hours a month, um, and really helps us at month end, uh, reconciling the tax collections and, uh, reconciling our bank accounts. And we pay that person roughly 13, 14,000 a year. I'm looking, and that person's actually looking to retire. Um, she's already retired, she's looking to actually fully retire. And, um, I'm, I'm looking to transition that part-time position to a full-time deputy finance director slash purchasing agent. And I know everyone loves the second part of that, the purchasing agent, but I'd like to focus on the deputy finance director. And, um, I mean, it's a, it's a two, it's a, you know, it's kind of like a hybrid job of two different, um, functions, the pay, the purchasing and the find, you know, being my backup, you know, finance director. Um, I really feel like this is big need in this department, um, and you don't have to take my, you don't have to take my dying words for it. You can, uh, listen to the August meeting and the, the auditor suggested it.
I can tell you probably several Board of Finance audit review meetings where we've heard that comment as well.
So, um, I think the real need, um, in a real, a real strain in the department is there's the day-to-day operations and then there's the long-term planning, review, budgeting, um, forecasting, bonding. There's just so much that's supposed to come out of this finance office, um, and the bottleneck is me. Um, everything flows through me. And, you know, I am, um, I'm one person and God forbid I have a health crisis, the town's out of an accountant. Um, so I really think it's crucial this department have, um, a second in command to, to help with the day-to-day operations. That would give me more time to do projections, long-term planning, the financial statement prep, bonding, um, uh, help with grants, administering grants, um, procurement. Um, there's a lot of stuff that comes out of the finance office that just, um, you know, I feel like we are always doing the just-in-time reporting, right? And we're, we kind of, I call it putting out the fires. What is the most urgent thing? Um, and one thing I think would really be a good, you know, key performance indicator would be getting the, getting two financial statements out on time. Two financial statements in a row, right? One's an anomaly, let's get two in a row. Um, I don't believe that's happened in, in a few years. So, um, and you know, we're three months away, we, we just finished the 21 audit, um, that's great. Uh, the 22 audit was due three and a half months ago, um, and the 23 audit, the 20, yeah, the, the next audit is coming up in three months. So, um, it's just like we're, we're, we're just chasing our tails. So.
But you promised, you promised a trifecta this year, so.
Yeah, well, I've gotten one done, um, in between my kidney stone, my wisdom tooth and my COVID.
That wasn't the COVID I was talking, trifecta I was talking about.
Yeah, I really think, um, I really think the, the town has grown to a size where it needs, um, another accountant, um, to, to handle some day-to-day operations, review payroll, review accounts payable invoices, um, oversee AR, help in the treasury, um, you know, um, I think this would be a, a vital person in the finance department. Um, it's, it's a 80,000 dollar position we're proposing, um, with 10% paid from water in sewer, five and five. Um, my three clerks, I have three clerks in my office, I have a payables clerk, I have a payroll clerk and an account receivable clerk. And, um, you know, we do payroll, I'm sure you guys heard me say, payroll is due Wednesday at 3 o'clock. Uh, department heads have until the end of Monday to review payroll and submit it. So between Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, my, my payroll clerk is just gung ho with payroll, um, and that's, and that's her whole, those three days. She's consumed with that and, you know, the, the payroll reporting and everything else, um, she has to do on Thursdays and Fridays, which is fine. Um, payables, um, you know, payables is a full-time position in itself and then so is account receivable. So I don't really get, um, when I have a special project, I don't have anyone I can kind of turn to to say, hey, I need someone to help me with this. So I think this person would be a, you know, a valuable part of the team.
Well, Kevin, I just, on the record, I wanna say I, I support this wholeheartedly. Um, I think the, the ramifications of having an understaffed finance department have been, you know, clearly visible with our audits being late for the last few years and, um, everything is just more complicated these days, so.
Well, one of the things Kevin and I had to go on before the state audit board regarding the audit and, you know, how it got completed and they said, okay, we were all set because we were just waiting, uh, to have one thing reconciled, they were fine with that, but then one question was, this is a history. So we pointed out that we had requested a deputy finance director because that was, you know, recommended and extremely well-needed for several years. And that, as soon as they heard that, they, okay, we're okay with this now. So, you know, you felt that that's, you know, they felt that it was being properly addressed.
Um, and, and I would just like to point out, on the revenue side, a, a fully staffed, not even a fully staffed, um, a staffed finance department, this particular line right here was my bread and butter at my last job and the four and a half years I worked for the town of Brookfield.
We can't see it.
It's FEMA storm grant reimbursements.
Correct. I was able to recoup 2.5 million dollars of money, okay? But you need time. I met twice a week with FEMA reps, two hours a time to meet with them on storms, on reopening grants, on COVID. The, right before I left, we were awarded 600,000 dollars for FEMA reopening. I don't think we ever applied here in town. So, um, and that's no fault of anyone, that's just, uh, you know, we have to kind of triage the battlefield and say, what's the most important here? Um, that's not to say we left that much money on the table, um, but, um, Um, that's not to say we left that much money on the table, um, but, um, but, you know, an analysis of, okay, every piece of Plexiglas we bought, part of that was reimbursable. Everything we did during COVID, um, any extra cleaning, all that stuff, you know, if we submitted it and had documentation, you know, the federal government kicks in some cash. So, that's just something, you know, going forward, you know, I, I always look at. So, I think, you know, a, a fun, you know, um, this will pay for itself and then some. Um, and then conversely, overtime. Um, so we have a new, a new, uh, payroll system. And, um, you know, payroll has to get out by Wednesday at 3:00. Um, and there was a time this year that payroll did not get out at Wednesday 3:00, and we had to go to the, the unions. So, I said, you know what? If we need overtime Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for payroll, I, I need a few hours. And so, this is budgeting two and a half hours a week per person at the $20,653. So, the, the $15,000 might be, you know, two hours, give or take, per person. Um, and...
I felt necessary to cut him just a little bit.
Yeah. So, just for my edification, for future contracts, would we be pushing...
We have the ability to switch it to Friday, and what we'll probably do moving forward is see if we can do that.
For every other week, would we be, instead of weekly?
You know, see, the, the problem is, we have a ton of people that live literally paycheck to paycheck, and one day right now makes a difference. So, we'd have to, we'd like to make sure we give them way ample warnings for that too. And then I think, if you wanna do it every other week, Board of Ed does every other week, but we're gonna have to try and find out how, you know, we'd have to work with the unions and that, 'cause we wouldn't want one contract saying every other week and one saying every week we can do that. But my guess is, uh, we...
Can I just say? Every other week is nice, um, I'm just trying to get them paid on Fridays and Thursdays.
That's, I mean, I think that's where we go, we go for Friday first, and then, once that's, you know, then work on, on the other one too, because, you know, there's a lot of our, if they, if they're gonna need to know well in advance, I'm gonna have to go that extra week without paying, so...
Yeah. And I would just like to say, um, the, the, my three clerks, um, are phenomenal, and they work, you know, um, like AP, um, Friday morning, the treasurer's in there signing checks. So, there's some nights that, um, you know, the, the AP clerk is there until 6:30 at night, 7 o'clock at night, you know, just getting everything ready for the morning. Um, you know, during month end, the, the AR clerk is in there, uh, making sure that all the interest is booked and everything before the Board of Finance meeting, um, to make sure I have numbers to give you. So, and, and the payroll clerk, she's there Monday through, you know, she's there every day, but Monday through Wednesday, she's there, you know, with her head in the computer, trying to, trying to get payroll out for everybody. So, I appreciate all three of them. So, just wanna say that on record so I can tell them it went out, 55 minutes and I, I gave him a shout out. Um, and then this one piece right here, maintenance of equipment is up. There's two parts to this. One, we now have to start paying for NOVA time, okay? It was originally budgeted in the ARPA fund. It is now, um, we are, I can't remember where it is. It's 100% expended right, right here, NOVA time, we're 100% expended. So, now it's going in the operating. And it's not 67,000 a year. I believe it's 20, 20 and some change. Um, so, that's why we're up a little bit, but also it's split amongst a couple of different departments. I think Water and Sewer pays a piece of it, um, as their people are also on the clock. Um, so that's why the increase there. Also, we are switching from MCSJ, the current accounting system, to Munis, right? Um, so that's gonna come at a cost as well, but there's still money right now in the bonded capital projects for that project. I believe the whole project was 600,000, we spent high threes, low fours, so there's a couple hundred thousand left. So, um, and then, just, um, with inflationary pressures, those budget workbooks in front of you, um, you know, the Board of Finance budget is not that big, $1,000, so someone's got a backstop, and that turns out to be the Finance Office. Um, so in this account, we pay for W2s, 1099s, um, you know, all the checks we need. So, this isn't like, um, you know, we, we don't have anything for office supplies. This is actually, you know, um, it's technical supplies, not, not office supplies, right? Things that we need to actually do our job. Um, mixer cartridges for the, for the ink for the checks, that's magnetic ink, um, things like that. So, and then travel allowance, I'm not sure who was getting the travel allow, I'm, I'm, I don't know where we're traveling to. Um, just sitting in our office all day, so we, we cut that a little bit back. Um, and then conventions and fees, that's just from my GFOA membership, that's gone up $25. So, I, besides that, so the Finance Department has gone up by approximately $75,000, uh, and most of that is driven by the Deputy Finance Director position, and a little bit is driven by the maintenance of equipment. Questions?
With, with the addition of the Deputy Director Purchase slash Purchasing Agent, uh, how, how does that staffing pattern compare to our neighbor friend towns?
Funny you say that. I stole their job description from their purchasing agent that they're applying for. Um, hold on one second, if I go to... So, um, there, there's a couple of different departments, and that, what I can do is, I will lay out, um, a couple comparable depart, a couple comparable towns. Um, I know we always compare ourselves to Stonington and Ledgeard. Um, I like to compare ourselves to the DURGS, the demographic reference group that the State of Connecticut Department of Education uses. Um, it sorts everybody by, you know, a whole bunch of different things. Um, but those are really our, you know, direct competitors. Um, are there any towns you want me to look at that you kind of...
No, I'm just, you know, if, I guess I'm just confirming that we were in fact understaffed as compared to other similar towns. And I understand, you know, we're late on the, um, things, and I, you know, I understand everything you're saying. I'm just trying to put that in the perspective of how it compares with other towns, if, 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 if we are in fact, you know, will this bring us up on par with them? Does this bring us ahead of them, behind them?
So, I think, I mean, what I do is, um, I know, hold on one second. I know, uh, a lot of towns are starting to hire purchasing agents. Waterford is currently, um, um, the lookout for a purchasing agent. I'm sorry, I sniped their job description, but let me, I mean, I can, you know what I'll do? For tomorrow, why don't I get a list of, you know, five competitive towns, and I'll list, I'll, I'll show what their departments look like, what our department looks like. And I guess a little schematic, instead of just, you know, kind of...
And I think it's not just, do they have a purchasing agent, but just sort of the size of the Finance Department.
Well, I'll give a full, a full staffing bedroom, you know, all the clerks, all the accountants, everything.
Yeah.
Did you, um, I, I couldn't really hear you, Peter, did you say something?
No, we were just, it's...
Okay, all right.
We're not necessarily comparing job title to job title, but the kind of the number of people or number of hours, you know, full-time equivalents within the departments, FTEs.
All right. Okay, I got homework.
Okay. So, any other questions for Kevin on the Board of Finance? Excuse me, on the Finance Department? Not, we can move on to the Board of Finance, we shouldn't take them long.
Really exciting here, folks.
Yeah.
We're not saving any of that money.
So, yeah. So, I think that really the biggest thing there is our, our contract with the audit.
Yeah.
Did I miss a number? Hold on, I'm just curious to see if I, so I, I talked to Mariana Stevens and Joe Burgot. There's, there's four pieces to the audit. Um, the Board of Ed pays $15,000 flat, um, and then Water and Sewer pay a portion, I believe, um, and then the town picks up the rest. Looking at that number, I don't believe it was that large of an increase, so I might have put the whole number in and not did the calculation to break it out. So, I apologize if that's the case. Let me just look at, uh, let me pull up the budget workbook real quick. Because the budget workbook tells no lies. Let's see. That's my apologies, folks. That number's 42,375.
Okay.
And here's the reasoning, hold on, let me show you here. So, there's the breakdown. Board of Ed pays $15,000 to cover the EFS, otherwise known as the ED 001.
But I'm sorry, what does EFS stand for?
Uh, boy, um, electoral, uh, I'm not sure, it's renamed. It used to be the ED 001, which was the, like, educational report, um, that they had to submit and get audited, and they had to provide that to the State of Connecticut. It's like a list of what the, what the Board of Ed spends their money on, stuff like that.
Okay.
But it, it's separate to the audit, so they pay for that, and then they pick, I mean, I think that was, you know, five or six thousand, and then they pick up, um, and, you know, they eat up up to 15,000. So, I ended up catching that. Let me just do a little, uh... Well, actually, I just have to mark it, 'cause we, we, we are not making a change here, right? Unless we are? I just wanna see what this number will be.
And we did confirm that we're in the second year of the five-year RFP?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. I confirm we're on the... So, I guess I will just save this, because we have a $10,000 cut right there. Where did it come from? Okay.
All right, well, that seems to be the the main items there for Board of Finance. Anyone have any?
I just wanna put, if I put, um, I know we're not doing it, I'm just showing, if I put that there, that reduces it. Unless we made something like error last time.
All right, well, in the interest of time, we'll let you...
We'll let you take care of that, Karen.
We'll let you work on your spreadsheet.
Okay, take your work, Paul.
So, yep, um, I'm not gonna cut it, 'cause we didn't, we didn't do that. So, I just have a note here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right. And then, um, just to let everyone know, there was also another, um, I'm not perfect, I made two errors in the budget. A $9,000 error, custodians. And there was also an error at the police. Um, I made a forty...
We can address those, would we do those departmental, right?
Right, 'cause you're really not, yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you, Kevin, that, um...
Yeah, those...
That was very good.
Yeah.
And...
All right, so tomorrow night, I will just have a, uh, I'll do a little comp of a couple of close finance departments.
Okay. So, um, next on the agenda is public discussion, I don't see any public.
Yeah, I don't see any public.
And, um...
Let me just check the Zoom real quick. Nope, no one.
No one but Ann, but I don't think.
No, she's not.
Um, so move on to board comments, does anyone have anything that they wanna share?
Not yet.
All right.
There's plenty of time for that.
We'll get to the good parts later.
Yes. Only just begun. All right, a motion to adjourn.
Denise, can I just say one thing?
Oh, sure.
Um, real quickly, did, um, meeting dates, we wanna talk about that tomorrow?
Um, you know what, yes, because then...
Okay.
Paul will be here. So, we're just, uh, what we're talking about is, we wanna make sure that, um, maybe we carve out another date somewhere at the end of all of this to just do our deliberations. Um, you know, we hope by adding this in, it would give us a little time, and we may even have time at our regular meeting. Um, but we thought we should put another one in the calendar, and, um, you know, it's always tough to get this room.
It's easier to cancel than it is to add.
Yes, um, so maybe, you know, we'll talk about that at tomorrow's meeting to, when we've got more of us here, to find a date that works for everybody. Anything else, Kevin, or Kevin? All right. Meetings adjourned.
Wait, you gotta, we need a second.
Oh, I thought we had one.
No, second.
All those in favor? I, me opposed. Motion carries.